Good morning, everybody. The March 19, 2025 meeting of the City Council is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. These proceedings are being video-recorded and can be viewed live on City of Las Vegas TV on Cox Cable Channel 2. You could also watch the meeting live online and access other city content by visiting The proceedings will be rebroadcast on the City of Las Vegas TV the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 PM and also on Friday at 4:00 AM, Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 7:00 AM, and the following Monday at 5:00 PM. This building is protected by a state-of-the-art detection-and-suppression sprinkler system. If alarms should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exits at the back of the chambers, out to the mezzanine, proceed out the double doors to the terrace, and down the back staircase. For anyone that has difficulty with stairs, please check with a marshal or fire official for assistance. Once outside, assemble on the northeast corner across the street from City Hall at Lewis and First Street. Employees wearing safety vests or city marshals will inform you when it is safe to re-enter the building. For public comment related to the items on the agenda, citizen participation and public hearing items, we have available a speaker card, which you can complete and submit to the city clerk. Cards are available in the clerk's office or at the rear of our chambers. If you do not submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking under public comment, citizen's participation, or specified public hearing items. If there is anyone present today that has a need for hearing-impaired equipment, please see the city clerk's staff. Please note, if you parked in the parking garage across the street, a self-validation machine is located in the foyer between City Council chambers and the security desk you walk through to enter the chambers. You must have your ticket with you to use the machine. If you do not have your ticket, see security personnel when exiting for a validation coupon. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given by Reverend David Denny, Mountain View Presbyterian Church, and please remain standing as he leads us for the pledge.
Madam Mayor, good to see you again.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
For the City Council members, distinguished guests, let us pray. Gracious and Almighty God, we come before you this morning with gratitude for the opportunity to serve, lead, and guide the city we love, Las Vegas, a city unlike any other, where the lights shine brightly, where dreams are pursued, and where hospitality is not just an industry but a way of life. We give thanks for this community, a place that welcomes people from every walk of life, where cultures and ideas converge, and where resilience is woven into the very fabric of our history. From the pioneers who dared to build in the desert to the visionaries who turned this valley into the entertainment capital of the world, Las Vegas has always been a city of possibility, of hope, of second chances. Today, we ask for your wisdom to guide the hearts and minds of our city leaders. May the decisions made in this chamber be filled with integrity, justice, and a vision for the greater good. Bless those who serve, our council members, city officials, first responders, our service dogs, and Operation Positive Change, business owners, and every resident who calls this place home. May they be reminded that leadership is not only about policy but about people, not only about progress but about compassion. In a city that never sleeps, we pray for rest for the weary, strength for the burdened, and inspiration for those who create, build, and serve. May Las Vegas continue to be a beacon of hope, innovation, and generosity, a place where kindness prevails and community thrives. As the neon lights will glow over our city tonight, let them be a reminder that light always overcomes darkness, and that with your guidance, the future of Las Vegas will shine even brighter. We offer this prayer with gratitude and hope. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Nicely done. May I invite you to please lead us with the pledge?
Absolutely, my honor. I pledge allegiance...
To the flag.
We will now proceed to the ceremonial part of our agenda. We are here now to recognize our Citizen of the Month. This is the ceremonial portion of our council agenda, and for our first item, I want to invite our Neighborhood Services Department Director Arcelia Barajas to join us.[464.12][464.12](APPLAUSE). Is she there? Okay. Our employees strive to meet our values of being kind, committed, and smart, and they work to build our community to make a better life. I am proud to announce that the Employee of the Month is Charles Chacon. Charles, please join us.[487.43][487.43](APPLAUSE). Hello. Congratulations. Charles is a neighborhood outreach specialist who joined the city team three years ago. Charles works tirelessly as part of the city's shift team. If you are not familiar, the Safe Home Improvement Funding and Training, or SHIFT Program, is a proactive approach to assist homeowners to repair and improve homes that may be in jeopardy of falling out of code compliance. Charles comes to work each day full of energy and with a positive attitude that is infectious. He is a problem solver who helps residents navigate challenging situations with clarity and compassion. Each resident and issue he encounters is different, and Charles is able to find the right fit for the job by offering wraparound services. Charles works to not only address immediate issues but also any underlying problems that, if not mitigated, could result in a recurrence of code or safety violations. Charles' ability to connect with people and help them is an example to us all. Charles, thank you for all your hard work and for helping those in need. It is my pleasure to recognize you as our March 2025 Employee of the Month.[575.32][575.32](APPLAUSE). Do we have a plaque? Oh. Oh. Oh, this is just lovely. We're going to take a picture in a minute, okay? Before we hear from Charles, I want to give Arcelia the chance to say a few words. There you are. Hello.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Congratulations, Chuck. It's my pleasure to share with you a little bit about Chuck and why he is so deserving of this award. So Chuck joined the city in 2022 and quickly became an integral part of our SHIFT team. As the mayor mentioned, the goal of our SHIFT team is to ensure housing safety and security for individuals and families through an array of programs focusing on code compliance and housing rehabilitation. In his role, Chuck works with individuals and families from mature and often underserved communities where folks often shy away from government and public officials. Due to his joyous nature and kindness, Chuck is able to quickly overcome barriers and establish rapport with individuals and families, enabling him to provide much-needed housing repairs and assistance. He not only earns their trust, he obtains their commitment to the program and also remains committed to seeing the projects through completion for each household that he works with. Chuck is smart and great at leveraging community resources and partnerships for greater impact. Just recently, he and the team collaborated with two local contractors and Home Depot to obtain donated materials and labor to replace a dilapidated fence that posed safety concerns for an elderly couple, thus improving their chances of aging in place. Thank you, Chuck, for being kind, committed, and smart. We appreciate you.
Thank you. That's very good. And let's take a picture. Say a few words, Chuck.
Sure. Thank you.
Is this you?
Yes. Thank you so much for this honor. It's always been a passion of mine to help people and just to improve people's lives.
That's your fan club over there.
It is. I was just about to say that.
Pass it down.
With the Neighborhood Services team, it's a pleasure to work with them because we improve people's lives on a daily basis. Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. Okay. Let's go, Chuck. Let's go. Next, give Chuck a great round of applause.[708.51][708.51](APPLAUSE). Congratulations. Okay. Oh, that's me. Perfect.
It's a timer.
It seems to fit. It seems to fit. Okay. For our final... For our final ceremonial item today, Councilwoman Victoria Seaman is going to recognize our great Animal Protection Services team. This group has been cracking down on illegal breeding in the city. Councilwoman, I love this one. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, can I invite the wonderful team up here of Operation Positive...[741.13][741.13](APPLAUSE). All of you. Pause. Yeah.[745.13][745.13](APPLAUSE). Where's our fur baby?
Scarlet's coming.
Okay. Scarlet's coming. Okay. Yeah, let's do half of you on the other side. So today, I want to recognize Chief Jason Potts and his exceptional team in the Public Safety Department for their outstanding effort and dedication to Operation Positive Change, an undercover sting operation targeting illegal breeding in the city of Las Vegas. I, in the animal community, met with him shortly after he came to the city, only a few years ago. He got to know me very well because, as a brand-new chief, he was there without hesitation when I needed someone to accompany me on a critical surprise inspection. I'm not sure he knew why he was there, but I quickly understood. I had an ally who shared my passion for animals in our city. He indulged the animal advocates at our several town hall meetings and patiently listened to our concerns about illegal breeding. He understood the crisis and took action with Operation Positive Change because illegal breeding was destroying our animals and our shelters. This operation, which has resulted in several arrests, multiple violations, and the rescue of several dogs, is a testament to the hard work and determination of Chief Potts and his FLEX team. Illegal breeding is a devastating issue that has plagued our animal community, flooding the streets, local rescues, and shelters with abandoned and abused animals. The animal community and I are grateful to Chief Potts and his team for his leadership on this important issue. Sometimes, the animal community and I felt like our cries for action fell on deaf ears, but Chief Potts, Rudy Tovar, and the team understood how serious the crisis was. Illegal breeding is an industry driven by profit without regard for an animal's well-being. These practices have led to overcrowded shelters, increased euthanasia rates, and countless innocent lives lost in the cycle of neglect and cruelty. Operations like Operation Positive Change are crucial because they hold illegal breeders accountable and raise awareness of the far-reaching problems caused by illegal breeding. We are making significant strides in addressing this issue, thanks to Chief Potts and his team. His efforts have saved countless dogs' lives and taken dangerous weapons off the street. It sent a message to those who exploit animals for profit. We will not stand by. We will hold you accountable. Thank you, Chief Potts, and thank your entire team for your dedication and hard work. We have made our community a safer, more compassionate place for all living beings. Your efforts are generally, genuinely appreciated, and we look forward to supporting you in future endeavors as we continue to fight for the well-being of all living entities in the city of Las Vegas. I would now like to present you with a proclamation recognizing Operation Positive Change. So, it's right here, but let me read it because it's important. "Whereas the City of Las Vegas Department of Public Safety, under the leadership of Chief Jason Potts, has demonstrated unwavering commitment to protecting the welfare of animals and enforcing laws against illegal breeding operations. And whereas, the Department of Public Safety FLEX team, including Lieutenant Tim Mullins, Sergeant Jeff Belsher, Officer John Wright, Officer Carlos Garcia, Officer Jorge Caloca, and Officer Louis Uvalde, conducted a dedicated six-day operation resulting in 35 citations, two arrests, and the rescue of 16 puppies, including high-value breeds. And whereas, Operation Positive Change successfully disrupted illegal breeding activities by addressing violations such as selling without a license, breeding without a permit, and selling underage puppies, leading to a significant reduction in online listings for unlawfully sold animals. And whereas, the operation rescued not only vulnerable animals but also enhanced public safety by seizing four firearms, including a stolen AR-15 rifle, underscoring the broader impact of illegal breeding on our community. And whereas, we extend our sincere gratitude to the APS team, Rudy Tovar, Sergeant Christine Watkins, and Brandi Fuse for their invaluable expertise, as well as Carly Helbert and the CAO team for their support in making this operation a success. And now, therefore, we, the mayor and the members of the Las Vegas City Council, hereby proudly proclaim, March 19, 2025, as Operation Positive Change Day."[1061.98][1061.98](APPLAUSE).
We definitely want to hear from you.
All right. I'm sorry, ma'am. I was just going to... No worries. I was just going to thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Seaman, and all our elected officials, our council members, for your unwavering support. Listen, you guys, your support is oxygen for our folks. We pay attention to everything that you're saying. This is our response to overpopulation in the valley. The live birth rate for animals is just exploding, and the root cause here is backyard breeding. One of the root causes of that is that. And so, our FLEX team is a specialized team. They are the tip of the spear, led by Chief Strabi and Lieutenant Mullins. They do a great job, and they continue to do it, using undercover tactics, they use undercover social media accounts, and we're going to continue to do it. And I do want the public to know, we have a webpage that actually will point you to, if you have any tips on any backyard breeding, please let us know, and we're going to continue to get after it. This is from the support of our council and our mayor, and we're going to continue to do it. So we really appreciate all your support. So thank you very much.
Thanks. All right. Let's do a picture. Chief Potts, will you join us and your team as well?
I need to grab it for him. I know I have to. Back and forth.
You guys are going to... Let's get real close. Rudy, I'm going to give that to you real quick. You hold that there.
Do we have everybody?
We've got to get MPT in there.
MPT. Where are you?
I'm scooting in. Hold on.
Wonderful. We have a...
We have certificates for everyone. We kind of jumped the gun there, but I do have certificates. Did you give them out, Brian? So congratulations.[1144.83][1144.83](APPLAUSE).[1145.83]
Oh, you can do it.
Yes, of course.
You guys are going to get real close.
Come on, you're no fun.
Rudy, I'm going to give that to you real quick.
Wait, let's wait for Brian.
We have a large group. Can I ask, can we talk about?
Chief, can I, I'm going to give this to you real quick. You hold that there.
Do we have everybody?
We've got to get MPT in there.
MPT, where are you?
I'm scooting in, hold on.
Let me get the mic for a second. We have a. We have certificates for everyone. We kind of jumped the gun there, but I do have certificates. Did you give them out, Brian? So congratulations. Thank you. I understand we have some time limitations, so we will be starting or continuing our meeting in five minutes at 9:30. Agenda item number seven, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. We'll limit this to two minutes. All comments made will be cross-referenced to those specific items. If anyone submitted a speaker card or who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium, state your name for the record. This is your opportunity to address the council, but the council is not able to respond or engage in dialogue. As I said, we will set the time at two minutes. Is there anybody that wishes to speak to the city council? Okay, seeing nobody, I thank you, and we will move to item number eight. For possible action, any item from the 9:30 a.m. session that the council staff and/or the applicant wish to be stricken, tabled, withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor Protem?
Madam Mayor, I have three items. Item 10 is a massage establishment license for relief massage, LLC DBA Relief Massage at 4343 North Rancho Drive, Suite 220. Wei Li Chen, managing member, there's a request by staff to strike that item. Items 47 through A through 47B, 24-0508 VAR1 and Z0N1. Applicant is Champion Resource Group LLC, owner is DFA LLC on .32 acres, generally located west of Harvey Munford Street, approximately 725 feet south of Washington Avenue. There's an abeyance request by the applicant to the April 16, 2025 city council meeting. And item 52, 24-05100N1, applicant is Champion Resource Group LLC, owner DFA LLC on point, excuse me, 2.68 acres, generally located at the southwest corner of Washington Avenue at Harvey Munford Street. There's an abeyance request by the applicant to the April 16, 2025 city council meeting, and that will be my motion.
All right. Shall we vote on the motion? Please post. Motion is carried. Agenda item nine, for possible action to approve the final minutes by reference of the February 19, 2025 regular city council meeting. Mayor Protem, can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I will move to approve.
Shall we vote on the motion? Please post. Agenda item number 10. Items number 10 through 37 are on the consent agenda, but item 10 was stricken, and I understand Councilwoman Summers Armstrong would like item 37 pulled for discussion. Remaining items 11 through 36 are considered to be routine, are recommended for approval by the departments, and may be enacted in one motion. Are there any items the council wishes to bring forward?
Mayor, if I might, Jeff Dorcak, City Attorney?
Yes.
I just wanted to make a staff comment on item 28, a purchasing and contracts item. As noted yesterday during our city council briefings, the purchasing team was able to get everything on this item uploaded properly. However, the agenda item says $142,600. The reality is it's $244,900, but everything with the item is correct, so it is good to go with the consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mayor Protem, may I have a motion for the consent agenda items?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve with the comments made by yourself and our city attorney.
All righty. Shall we vote on the motion? Please post. Motion carries. What? I don't have it later. Okay, he'll stop me if I'm doing well. Agenda item number 37.
Ton was stricken.
Are we striking this item?
Thirty-seven is correct.
Okay. R-19-2025, for possible action to approve a resolution of acceptance of bid for the sale of real property at internet auction between the city of Las Vegas and Greystone Nevada LLC, a Delaware limited liability company for property located at 850 Las Vegas Boulevard North, Ward 5. Ms. Summers Armstrong, Ms. Paskey?
Actually, it's.
It's not available. There you are. You may proceed.
All right. Good morning, Mayor and Council. As you know, on March 6, we had the auction for the Cashman property, and we had a high bid of thirty.
Sorry, turn it up. Please state your name for that.
Oh, sorry. Teresa Boyce, real estate manager.
And sorry I didn't state your name for you.
We had the auction. The winning bidder, or the high bid, was $36,150,000. It was Greystone LLC, and John's going to go through the next steps.
So, yeah, March 19, which is today, is the date that the council will review the highest bidder, being Greystone.
Mr. Della, can you state your name for the record?
Oh, sorry. John Radilla, Assistant City Attorney. Greystone Nevada, which operates, is the LLC that operates Lennar Corporation. So you'll consider the highest bid today. We will commence, assuming it's approved, we will commence negotiations of a purchase and sale agreement to be executed by April 17, which will have timelines for entitlements for the project, with an anticipated closing sometime in mid-September on the project after review by planning commission and city council of the entitlement actions that are required for them to develop the property. So we're happy to entertain any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from the council members? Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Excuse the froggy voice. Is there appropriate time for, to get some statement from the folks representing the bidders at this time?
Absolutely. Would you state your name for the record?
Yes. Good morning, Mayor, members of council. Stephanie Grohnhour, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. Here on behalf of the applicant and the bidder, in this case, Lennar Homes, we're really excited and would ask for your approval this morning as the highest bidder. This is a great opportunity, I think, for the city to have a really special redevelopment area at the old Cashman Field, and we're super excited to work with the council on your vision and see that to fruition. You've been a great partner to Lennar, and we're excited to have another project moving forward.
All right. Is there a motion, Councilwoman Summers Armstrong?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think we've made it very clear how important it is for us to find ways to develop housing in our community, especially in Ward 5. It is, we are very bereft in housing, and this is an exciting, once-in-a-lifetime, my lifetime, opportunity. And so with that, I'd like to make a motion for approval.
Thank you so much. Shall we vote on the motion? Please post. Motion is carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 38. Discussion for possible action regarding the ratification of Christopher Craig as Innovation and Technology Director, $200,000 plus benefits coming from the general fund. Mr. Jansen?
Good morning, Mayor Berkeley, Member City Council, Mike Jansen, City Manager. I'm pleased to be here today to present before you for ratification as our new Director of Innovation and Technology, Mr. Chris Craig on my right. Before I turn over the mic to Chris, I want to tell a few words to you about Chris's career in the innovation and technology world. And I will tell you, Chris Craig's career in innovation and technology spans well over 25 years, and it is impressive. In this time, he's held positions at every level of that industry, and for that reason, Chris has great respect from his staff that's behind me, coworkers in other departments, and certainly from the industry as a whole. Besides his working career, Chris also did quite well on the education side. And similar to his work history, starting from the bottom and working himself all the way up, Chris earned degrees, an associate's degree, a bachelor's degree, a master's degree, and on top of that, he's been an instructor at both UNLV and at Porterville College in California, essentially paying it forward to the next generation of IT professionals. And with those types of credentials, I'm just pleased to present him to you today. And I want to mention, besides an army of IT team behind me, Chris's wife Myra is here as well to support him on this special day. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chris.
Thank you so much. Mr. Craig?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jansen. Chris Craig, Acting Director of Innovation and Technology currently, for the record. You know, I've had a wonderful career over the past 25 years and got to experience many great things, but probably my best experience has been here at the city of Las Vegas, serving you all and the citizens and working with the amazing innovation and technology team. And I really look forward to continuing those efforts with them long into the future. So thank you for putting your trust in me for this, in this position, and I promise I will work hard every single day to make you proud and not regret your decision today. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the council?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Congratulations, assuming all my colleagues hit the yes button, but I know I'm going to be hitting the yes button because in these almost six years that I've been on the council, you've been heavily involved in everything technology for the city. You've given us tour of the innovation center when we're adopting new measures or new technology down there, and I think you're very well poised to help us continue to grow in this space. One thing that I do want to put on your radar is I think we need to be thinking as a city, how do we use and leverage technology to increase public safety for all of our residents? And that's a task that I am going to be checking in with you quite regularly, but congratulations, and very well deserved.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to say anything? I'm absolutely delighted at your appointment, and I will now ask the Mayor Protem for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had one request, though. I believe you're a social media influencer. I don't know if people know that or not. I mentioned it to my son, who's nine, and he, he made me promise to ask you if you can make him a 3D dragon that he can give to a little girl in class. So it's not contingent upon my vote, but just if you could nod your head yes or no, that would be great.
Just say yes.
Yes, we can absolutely do that. It would be my pleasure.
I would move to approve then. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Shall we vote on the motion? Please post. Motion is carried. Congratulations.
Thank you. So if I may, Mayor, I just want to say thank you to all of you.
Of course.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I really appreciate it. Thank you, city management staff, for your trust in me. I want to thank this amazing team, hopefully they got permission to do that.
We were not surprised.
And the two driving forces for everything I do, my wife Myra and my daughter Santana.
Can you, can they, would you please stand so we can acknowledge you? Thank you so much, and congratulations. Agenda item 39. Discussion for possible action regarding the denial of a permanent massage establishment license for a Duo Duo Massage LLC, DBA Duo Duo Massage at 7240 West Azur Drive, Suite 120. Mr. Yang, managing member, Ward 6, Ms. Bruni. Ms., oh, okay. Would you please state your name for the record?
Yes. Good morning, Madam Mayor and City Council. Darcy Adelby-Hurd, Business Licensing Manager. We're here with item number 39 for the denial of a permanent massage establishment license for Duo Duo Massage in Ward 6. The applicant's counsel, Kurt Kennedy, is here. He has indicated that this location has closed and has been confirmed by our compliance team. However, we still would like to make a record of the activity that took place under the ownership at the location in the short time it was opened. With your permission, I would like to read that into the record. In September of 2024, our staff conducted a pre-issuance inspection, provided education to the licensee of our Las Vegas municipal code. The following day, temporary license was issued on September 5. Three weeks later, on September 24, a follow-up inspection was found. There were beds in the office and the break room, and it appeared someone was living on site. The massage therapist on site did not have a license. Staff provided education once again to the licensee. In November, a routine follow-up inspection was conducted and found a newly locked hallway door that led to the massage rooms, and even, though no massages were taking place at the time, it took some time for access to be granted to our staff. Our license officers found condoms in the bathroom, red lighting in the massage rooms, and personal items such as toiletries, undergarments, and clothing in the shower room, which are signs of residential activity, with two lounge beds, beds with fully stocked bedding in the back office and break room. Again, the massage therapist on site did not have a license. The following month, in December, on December 6, 2024, Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department did an undercover operation where the undercover officer's thigh and groin area were touched after the UC, the undercover officer asked for sexual favors, and the therapist told him to come back a different day. So no arrests were made that day. But on February 7, this year, 2025, two months later, Metro did another operation where the key employee Yang Bai or Bei solicited for prostitution after his massage. Our staff was notified and a joint inspection was conducted where the interior hallway door was once again found locked. The employee break room was still set up for residential use, and alcohol was found on site as well. An emergency closure was issued by Metro, and the temporary license was suspended. As mentioned, their council informed us that they have closed and withdrawn their application. And with staff's recommendation of denial of the permanent license as per Las Vegas Municipal Code 6.06160, any person and/or entity who has been denied may not apply for a license or approval for suitability until one year following the effective date.
Okay, thank you. Would you care to make a comment?
Just Kurt Kennedy, bar number 5032, 815 South Casino Center Boulevard, counsel for the ownership. And yes, they did vacate the unit, and lease has been canceled, and so they surrendered their application, and they understand the consequences. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so very much. Are there any questions or comments from the council members? Okay. In that case, is there a motion, Councilwoman Bruni?
Yes, thank you. I would like to make a motion to approve the denial of the permanent massage establishment license for Duo Duo.
Shall we vote? Please post. Motion is carried. Thank you so much.
Hey, I have the next item, Madam, item 40.
Would you like to stay there?
Yes, I can go back.
At that time, it seemed silly to me. Okay. Agenda item 40, discussion for possible action regarding the denial of a permanent massage establishment license for Golden Class LLC DBA La Luna Massage at 7350 West Cheyenne Avenue, Suite 102. Sarah Lynn Moon Zhang, managing member, Ward 4, Ms. Palensky. Councilwoman, I almost made you a Congresswoman. I apologize for that. I apologize. Would you care to comment?
Yes. Darcy Adelby-Hurd, Business Licensing Manager, for the record. So item 40 is for the denial of the permanent license for massage establishment Golden Class LLC doing business as La Luna. La Luna was first, was issued its first temporary license in March 2022. Following multiple inspections conducted in the subsequent months, the business was found to be in compliance, and a permanent license was granted in November of 2022. However, in August of 2024, an investigation showed that La Luna was advertising online for illicit massage services and sexual activities. As a result, an undercover operation was conducted on August 22, 2024, during which a Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Officer received a massage and was solicited for prostitution. After this operation, our staff, along with the State Nevada Massage Therapy Board, did an inspection, found evidence of residential use on site, including finding bedding, personal toiletries, undergarments, clothing, and a fully stocked refrigerator. Metro issued emergency closure, requiring the business to meet Metro issued emergency closure, requiring the business to meet with the city, with city officials after. A meeting was conducted on September 23rd with the applicant licensing and the city attorney's office. The business was allowed to reopen based on the assurances from the owner that this was an isolated incident and that stricter oversight would be implemented. However, one, a week later, on October 1st, 2024, we received a complaint forwarded by the Massage Therapy Board that G. Wang, the mother of the licensee and the key employee of the business, was operating the business and facilitating the illicit acts. Our office did an inspection on October 4th and found a newly installed locked door hallway leading to massage rooms, and also found G. Wang on site along with personal items. On February 7th, Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department conducted an undercover operation during which the UC was again solicited for prostitution. Our team did an inspection after and confirmed the employee room, laundry room, were still set up for residential use, and a notice of violation and correction notice were issued in the amounts of $849. We received an application on February 10th for a change of ownership, transferring the entity of Golden Class LLC from the business, the business from the husband Zhao Bei Zhang to his wife Sarah Lynn Zhang. However, because of the ongoing violations and the fact that Sarah Lynn, as the key employee, was acting in the capacity during the previous fractions, the department reviewed her application and deemed it not eligible to qualify for a temporary license. We ask you to consider the denial of the permanent license as per Las Vegas Municipal Code 6.06160. Any person and/or entity who has been denied may not apply for a license or approval for suitability until one year following the effective date. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would you care to comment?
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor and honorable members of the city council. My name is Kurt Kennedy, Nevada, bar number 5032, offices at 815 South Casino Center Boulevard. I'm here today with my client, Mr. Zhao Bei Zhang, and his wife, Sarah Lynn Zhang. Zhao Bei is spelled X-I-A-O-B-A-I, Zhang, Z-H-A-N-G, and then Sarah Lynn, S-A-R-A-L-Y-N, Zhang is his wife. I wanted to provide you a little background before your decision here today about my client. Mr. Zhang is the owner of Golden Class LLC. It's a Nevada limited liability company that he formed back in 2023 in order to pursue the effort to open this massage business here within the city. It was licensed and operational as of, I believe, April 2023, and have been going since that time. I wanted to give you some background on Mr. Zhang. Mr. Zhang presents to you someone who came here from China in 2010 when he was only 18 years old. He came here by himself to try to make a life for himself. And not only did he just come here to try to make a life for himself, he gave back to his new country, and he joined the United States Army in 2015. He became a member of the U.S. Army Reserves, worked his way up to an E5 rank, I think that's like a sergeant, equivalent to a sergeant rank. And within the U.S. Army Reserves, based primarily in California, he provided services, mechanic services and training, as well as worked with the Army Finance Department with the reserves. He was actually a member of the reserves until August of last year, when he received an honorable discharge from the U.S. Army. He gained his citizenship in 2017. He works in the finance industry, and he has worked with a private accounting firm here in the Las Vegas community. While in the reserves, he met his wife Sarah Lynn, who also came from China in 2010, different parts, so they didn't know each other, but they met each other and struck up a relationship that resulted in a marriage last year. She joined the reserves as well in 2016, and she's still a member of the U.S. Army Reserves, and she's a registered nurse and works as well as a hospice nurse at a hospice facility here in Las Vegas. So you have, I wanted to make it clear to who the ownership was. I think sometimes with massage businesses, they, there's all sorts of negative implications, including about the owners, but this is not that. These are two U.S. Army veterans, one's still in there. These are citizens. These are individuals who came here from another country, and they have shown what an entrepreneurial spirit is all about. They came here, gave back right away to their country, joining the Army, serving our nation. They didn't have to do that. They become citizens, and they're still trying to work hard and do things the right way. They, he decided in '23, he tried to open this business. His mother is here, and she was going to help out with the business. Unfortunately, that's caused some issues as far as management and oversight. But he started this small business here within our community. It was approved by the city as a way to give back and also to try to make something of himself with an extra business that he could oversee and manage and develop here within our city. In late last year, well, in August roughly last year, as the business license representative has indicated, they did have some trouble there. They did have an individual who was arrested. And then this happened again with another therapist relatively recently. And I've talked with my client about that, about, you know, what's happened here. Clearly, it's a question of selection of who your therapists are, and also a question of oversight and management. Every therapist that is hired by the business has been a licensed Nevada Massage Board licensee. They're allowed to give massage services. But as you all know, even with licensed therapists, some negative things can have happened, and that happened here in this case. And I've talked with my client as well about what could be done if given another opportunity. Here we are, he's already had one opportunity, I get it, and here's the second bite of the apple or the third that we're looking for here. I've talked to my client as well about what could be done as far as selecting better therapists, better training, better background checks, also the management and oversight. Sarah Lynn Zhang is now able, she was applying to be a co-owner with her husband, with the city, and that application obviously is kind of in limbo because of everything that's gone down. But she's now in a position that she can be at the business on a more regular basis. His mother was there when the arrest incidents had occurred. And it's unfortunate that, and I'm not, we're not trying to blame his mother, but the fact is, the motivations are a little different between his mother and Mr. Zhang as far as oversight and management of the business. I now have a confirmation from Ms. Zhang that she can be there, she has the time and the effort. That's one of the reasons she wanted to become a co-owner of the business, so she could be there more often and have a stake in this, not just with her husband, but to support him and to support this business. So I think that they definitely realize one thing. Getting a license is a privilege, not a right. Becoming a citizen is a privilege, not a right. And they had to go through those steps. You have two individuals here who've given back to this country, they're trying to do it the right way. Obviously, minority ownership here, so you have veterans, minority ownership, trying to make something of themselves here in the United States and to further their goals of becoming more successful. My client has indicated as well that if granted another opportunity, there will be greater efforts at management and oversight in addition to the greater background checks on who the therapists are and who is being hired. Obviously, this can't happen. Having individuals arrested is more than just a little no-no. It's a major breach of trust between the city, which grants a license, and the massage business owners. They have to have more stringent levels of management and oversight, and I believe my client and his wife, they both understand that. What we're asking the city council to consider today, despite this history which has been laid out, is to allow the issuance of a six-month temporary license, subject to any conditions deemed appropriate by the city or by business license, and allow a six-month period of time for them to make some changes here, show some proof, show some more good faith, due diligence, and to prove that this can be done the right way. There are massage businesses in Clark County and in the city which you never hear from because they do things the right way. This is not a business, a type of business, that is inherently flawed, that has inherent issues with character and the people that work there and own them. There are many massage businesses that get their license, they pay their annual fee, and nobody hears anything of them because nothing happens there, and they do things the right way. My clients are trying to do that. Obviously, they need the city's assistance with this, with the grant of a temporary license. We understand how we come here, hat in hand, having, he went through a previous matter last September to try and stay open. But my client is determined to do this the right way, to show good faith, and we are asking the city to show some back to this veteran-owned, minority-owned business and allow a six-month temporary license with no, obviously with no issues or concerns that happened during those six months, and will come back here in six months or whatever deemed appropriate. And then I make the pitch that they showed their good faith, can we get a permanent license, or do we continue it on a temporary status? We're asking for this opportunity for my clients. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy?
Yes, sir.
Do you care to comment, Darcy?
I don't have any further comments.
Are there any questions or comments from the council? Is there a motion, Councilwoman Polansky?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Kennedy, I really appreciate your advocacy for your client. You're a good lawyer, and I appreciate their immigrant story. I have, as a Korean-American, I have one very similar, and as a small business person, I feel for them. But the rule of law is the rule of law, and soliciting prostitution in Ward 4 is not acceptable. And your clients can have a year to think about how to sharpen their pencil and be better managers and operators and come back at that time. I'm going to move for approval of item number 40, the denial of a permanent massage establishment license. Thank you.
Shall we vote?
Can I ask a quick?
Yes, you may, of course. Was this the first incident I was, oh, it's just, okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Shall we vote? Please post. Motion carries.
Thank you for the time today.
Agenda item 41, boards and commissions. Discussion for possible action regarding the reappointment of Matt Tramp, Ward 1, Aaron Batista, Ward 3, Liz Becker, Ward 4, as neighborhood representatives and staff designees, Samantha Burgess, Ward 2, Brenda Flank, Ward 4, and Blanca Lindsey, Ward 6, and the appointment of nominees Jan Churchill, Mayor's Designee, Shannon Nordstrom, Ward 2, Angel Liscano, Ward 5, Robert Estrada, Ward 6, as neighborhood representatives, and Alexander Fuller, Ward 1, Arlene Alvarez, Ward 3, and Nora Laris, Ward 5, as staff designees for the Neighborhood Partners Fund Board. The Neighborhood Partners Fund program is designed to assist the residents of the city of Las Vegas to improve the quality of life in their communities. Procedure for this board is appointment by the mayor and the city council. I move to approve the reappointments and appointments. Please vote on the motion. Post. Motion carries. Congratulations to all those that have been appointed or reappointed. Agenda item 42, discussion for possible action regarding the appointment of nominee Susan Helsley to other post-employment benefits trust fund board of trustees. A vacancy was created with Gary Emmeling's retirement. Ms. Helsley is qualified and wishes to be appointed. I move to approve the appointment. Please vote. Post. Motion carries. Agenda item 43, discussion for possible action regarding the appointment of nominee Walter Jones III to a Ward 5 seat of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission. A vacancy exists due to the term expiration of a previous member. Mr. Jones is eligible and wishes to serve. Is there a motion, Councilwoman Summers Armstrong? So moved. Oh, my. Shall we vote on the motion? Please vote. Please, please post.
Is everybody going?
Got it? Okay. Agenda item 44, recommending committee bills eligible for adoption at a later meeting. Item number 44, Bill 2025-1, will be heard at a later meeting. Agenda item 45, items number 45A through 45C are on the consent agenda, are considered to be routine and are recommended for approval by the Department of Community Development. Mayor Pro Tem, can I have a motion to approve this consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Shall we vote? Items number 46 are on the one motion, one vote agenda. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the council not in agreement with the conditions and all the standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have this item removed from this portion of the agenda. Item 46, 24-0645-SUP1 applicant, the beautiful event center owner, the Stephen Traisman Living Trust on a land use entitlement project request for an existing banquet facility use at 850 South Durango Drive, Suite 100, C1 Limited Commercial Zone, Ward 1, Mr. Knutson. Planning commission and staff recommend approval of this item. This is a public hearing that I now declare open. Is there anyone wishing to be heard on item 46?
Madam Mayor, Ms. Jones, do you mind coming down to the microphone? Thank you. And Madam Mayor, I have asked Mr. Lowenstein if it's okay with you to read a condition into the record, and I'll ask Ms. Jones if she's comfortable with that prior to any comments up here, if you're okay with that.
Thank you. Mr. Lowenstein.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Peter Lowenstein, for the record, there are two conditions. The first would read, alcohol service shall be limited to 5:00 p.m. through 2:00 a.m. Monday through Friday. End of the sentence, next sentence, no time restriction applied to Saturday and Sunday. Condition number two would read as follows, an administrative required review shall be conducted one year from the date of business license issuance. Thank you.
Do you accept those conditions?
I do.
Thank you so much. Mayor Pro Tem, may I have a motion? Oh, wait, first, I'm going to close the public meeting. And now, may I have a motion?
Yes, and just for the council's knowledge, the facility, I want you to be super successful. It just is right next to a preschool facility, and so that was the only concern. But I hope you were very, very successful and have lots of fun events. So with that, I will move to approve.
All right. Shall we vote on the motion? Please post. Motion passes. Congratulations, Ms. Joan and Jones, and great success on your venture.
Thank you very much. I'm honored by what you guys do here.
Agenda item 48, 24-0570-ABAYANCE-ITEM, on the following land use entitlement project request on 0.38 acres at 1328 West Lake Mead Boulevard, R2, medium-low-density residential zone. 48A, 24-0570-VAR1-ABAYANCE-ITEM, to allow a 10-foot rear yard setback where 20 feet is required. 48B, 24-0570-SUP1-ABAYANCE-ITEM, for a proposed church/house of worship use. 48C, 24-0570-SDR1-ABAYANCE-ITEM, for the proposed conversion and expansion of an existing 784-square-foot, single-family residential dwelling into a 3,310-square-foot church with waivers of the perimeter, landscape buffer requirements. The applicant/owner is Holy Cross Missionary Baptist Church, Inc. The planning commission recommends approval of the entire land use entitlement project. Staff recommends denial of the entire land use entitlement project. These are in Ward 5, Ms. Summers Armstrong, and our public hearings, which I now declare open. Is the applicant present?
Good morning, Atlantic Christofferson, 2885 East Quail Avenue, here representing the church. The project itself is located at Lake Mead, the northwest corner of Lake Mead and Lexington, and adjacent to the commercial that's there on Lake Mead, and two residential parcels to the north. The site itself, the expansion will happen to the west of the existing structure. The waiver is requested on the west side of the property, where staff was requiring 20 feet, where we're providing 10, and again, that's adjacent to the commercial. So we feel like that is appropriate because we can still get landscaping in there if needed, as well as meet the safety requirements for fire. The parking lot will be 25... The parking lot will be 25 spaces, which will provide enough parking. There is no requirements, waivers being requested for parking as we meet the parking requirements for the new structure. The elevations of the project, the height will be a maximum of 28 feet 4 inches, with the structure providing a 1,980-square-foot sanctuary, additional restrooms, and storage. And with that, landscaping, we are providing the landscape requirements adjacent to the residential, which is eight feet, along with some fingers into the parking lot to help with Heat Island. All the landscaping material meets the requirements set forth in the recommended for Ward 5. And here, well, I apologize, we concur with staff's conditions if approved, and here to answer any questions you may have.
I thank you very much. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mayor, Seth Floyd for the record. Mayor, staff finds the proposed church development will not be harmonious and compatible with the surrounding area, as evident by the requested variance to allow reduced rear setback, and waivers to allow reduced landscape buffer widths along portions of the south, east, and west property lines. Staff finds the request to be self-imposed hardships, and thereby recommends denial of all entitlement requests. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to be heard on these items?
Yes, my name is Crystal Turner. I am the Assistant Pastor of the Holy Cross Baptist Church, and I just want to say that we're trying to, this was approved once before, back in 2006 or 2005, and we just want to go ahead and go with the project and ask for your approval on today. We actually have come up to, want to come up to code to be able to contribute to the historic West Las Vegas project that you guys have in place now. So we are asking that the board would approve.
Is there anyone else caring to comment on this issue?
My name is George Turner. I'm the Senior Pastor and Overseer of the Holy Cross Baptist Church. We've been there almost 35, close 40 years, and that community has been improved all around, except the church. And I believe that it's time for the church to improve. We're trying to help the community and to help young men to change their life, and we can do that at Holy Cross Baptist Church. But we need a larger place, and certainly, I hope and trust that we can move forward on this project, because we've been delayed for a long time. And I know what the scripture says, and all of our ways acknowledge the law, and he will direct your paths. And we are here to ask the city to help us to move forward with the Holy Cross Baptist Church. Hallelujah, glory!
Yes, please.
My name is Elaine Leso, and I'm the President of the Finance Committee and on the Board for Holy Cross Baptist Church. And as he was saying, we have got many offers to buy our land because of the upgrowing developments that's around Lake Mead Boulevard. Even Marios have been expanded. Even we've had fast foods right next door to us, right next door to us, that has been grown. And we'd just like to see, like to see Lake Mead and the community grow and be beautified, because we are on the outside skirts of Lake Mead, where everyone can see as they pass by Martin Luther King in Lake Mead.
Thank you so much. At this point, I'll close the public hearing, seeing no other, no other comments. Are there any questions or comments from the council? No? In that case, is there a motion, Councilwoman Summers Armstrong?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and excuse my hoarseness, everyone. Thank you so much for coming to join us on webcam last week. I appreciate your, your time, and I had some concerns. We talked about this at length, about this project at length, and I think the concerns of staff are real about the setbacks. I think those are real things, and the allowance or your variance request for landscaping. I think what concerns me most is that this is not in compliance with where we are right now in the development of historic West Las Vegas and the surrounding areas. It does not fit into the current plan for the community, and I'm going to recommend denial.
All right. Is that in the form of a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Shall we vote? Please post. Motion is passed.
Thank you.
Sorry so much. Okay, did I miss something? Agenda item 49, 24-0648-RQR1-ABAYANCE-ITEM, required review, this is a public hearing. Applicant Lamar Central Outdoor LLC, owner, Herbs Development LLC, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request for required review of an approved special use permit for a 40-foot-tall, 14-foot-by-48-foot off-premise sign at 2395 North Rancho Drive, C2 General Commercial Zone, Ward 5, Ms. Summers Armstrong. Staff recommends approval. This is a public hearing. I now declare it open. Is the applicant present?
Yes, my name is Scott Nafsky. I'm with Lamar Outdoor Advertising, 1863 Elm Drive. We accept staff's conditions on this, and in fact, we've already fulfilled them, so we would ask for your approval.
All right. Can I have a staff report?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Peter Lowenstein for the record. The site remains suitable for an off-premise sign use. A valid building permit was issued for the sign, and all inspections have been completed. The sign is in compliance with the approved special use permit and remains compatible with adjacent land uses. Therefore, staff is recommending approval, with the conditions requiring another five-year review and maintenance to rectify the burden nuisance. So we did revisit the site in late February, and what the applicant has said is accurate. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Is there anything further that you wish to say?
No.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the council?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to confirm with staff that all the conditions for the, I'm sorry, I didn't, there was some distraction, that we've got the abatement for the pigeons, and it's been all cleaned up. Everything's good.
Okay, and you accept all the conditions?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Is there a motion, Councilwoman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have for approval.
Shall we vote? Please post. Motion passes. Thank you for coming in. Item 50, 24-0254, on the following land use entitlement projects request on approximately 28.27 acres on the north side of Kyle Canyon Road, approximately 336 feet west of the Alpine Ridgeway alignment. Item 50A, 24-0254-GPA1, from PCD Plan Community Development to MLA Medium Low Density Residential. Note, the request was amended to ML Medium Low. 50B, 24-0254-ZON1, from U undeveloped PCD Plan Community Development, general plan designation to R-Th, Single Family attached. Note, the request was amended to R-SL Residential Small Lot and R1 Single Family Residential. Item 50C, 24-0254-VAR1, to allow stub street terminus where a cul-de-sac or hammerhead is required. Item 50D, 24-0254-VAR3, to allow stub street termini where a cul-de-sac or hammerhead terminus is required, and to allow a 1.27 connectivity ratio, where 1.30 is the minimum required. 50E, 24-0254-VAR4, to allow proposed retaining or perimeter walls that do not conform to Title 19.6 Development Standards for Height. 50F, 24-0254-VAC1, petition to vacate existing U.S. government patent easement and right-of-way. 50G, 24-0254-VAC2, petition to vacate existing U.S. government patent easement and right-of-way. 50H, 24-0254-TMP1, Kyle Canyon and SMP North for a proposed 47-lot, single-family residential subdivision. Note, the request was amended to 34 lots. 50H, D, where, okay. 50I, 24-0254-TMP3, Kyle Canyon and SMP South for a proposed 68-lot, single-family residential subdivision with a waiver of perimeter landscape buffer requirements. The applicant is TriPoint Homes, and the owner is B-NWI2 LLC et al. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the land use entitlement project. Staff recommends approval on 24-0254-GPA1 and ZON1, and denial on VAR1, VAR3, VAR4, VAC1, VAC2, TMP1, and TMP3. These are in Ward 6, Ms. Bruni, and our public hearings, which I now declare open. Is the applicant present?
Good morning, Your Honor, council members. My name is Tony Sless, address 1980 Festival Plaza Drive, here on behalf of the applicant TriPoint Homes. I am also filling in for my partner, Jennifer Lazovich, who has been called away this morning to Carson City to attend some legislative matters, so I will do my best this morning to fill in for her. As indicated, we are representing TriPoint Homes on a proposed, single-family detached residential project. The project is, just to familiarize yourself with it, is located, as you can see from the aerial, on the north side of Kyle Canyon Road, west of Schaumburg, and south of Ruston. What we have before you is a development that really has two parts to it. You can see the site is bisected by a log cabin. On the north side, we have proposing 34 homes, works out to a density of about 3.2 units to the acre. To the south, we are proposing 68 homes. That works out to a density of about 3.5 units to the acre. We started this entitlement process about a year and a half ago. TriPoint has been working with Councilwoman Bruni in her office, as well as Planning Commissioner Jennifer Taylor during that time period. And during that collaborative effort, we now believe we have reached a point where we're providing a very nice product for your consideration. During those discussions, there was a lot of discussion with related to an amenity plan. We have tried to emphasize that here, blowing up some of it. Entryway, where we're going to have not only amenities, but active amenities, in this case, a volleyball park and associated uses with it. You can see kind of a more of a blow-up of that. As well, we are going to provide a walking path, which is along our northern portion right here. It does have benches and, and dog stations and et cetera. So again, not only is it open space, but active in nature. We appreciate Planning's recommendation of approval, at least Planning Commission's recommendation of approval, and we agree to all of the conditions contained in the staff report, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. May I have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mayor Seth Floyd, for the record. Mayor, staff finds the amended general plan designation and rezoning designations compatible with the surrounding area and recommend approval of both. In addition, staff has no objection to the petitions to vacate and recommends approval of both. Staff does not support the use of substandard streets with stub terminations and recommends denial of all variances and both tentative maps. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to be heard on these items? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Does the applicant agree to other conditions?
I do, we do.
Are there any questions or comments from the council? In that case, is there a motion, Councilwoman Bruni?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Tony, for the presentation. I, I do want to thank the applicant, TriPoint. As you mentioned, this conversation started a long time ago, and I think, you know, thank you for your patience, because we were in the middle of building out the Kyle Canyon input plan, and so really wanted to make sure that the project aligned with the vision that we had for Kyle Canyon. And so I do appreciate the, the many conversations and the time that it took to get here. I do think what you have presented is a beautiful community that will serve folks who want to live near our beautiful landscapes, but also, more importantly, our Creech and Nellis Air Force families. Thank you for the openness around the amenities. I know we talked about sort of what that might look like, but overall, I think it's a great community that will add a lot of value to that area. So with that, I am happy to make a motion to approve item number 50, with all of its different parts, A through I.
All right. Thank you so much, Councilwoman. Shall we vote on the motion? Please post. Motion passes. Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Item 51, 24-0329, on the following land use entitlement project request, 1.86 acres at the northwest corner of Smoke Ranch Road and Rainbow Boulevard, C1 Limited Commercial zoning. 51A, 24-0329-VAR1, to allow 78 parking spaces where 150 spaces are required. 51B, 24-0329-SDR1, for a major amendment to an approved plot plan and building elevation review for the proposed addition of one-story, 4,633-square-foot commercial building with drive-through development and parking lot reconfiguration with a waiver of perimeter landscape buffer requirements. The applicant is Ray Germain, and the owner is Winway LLC. The Planning Commission recommends approval on the land use entitlement project. Staff recommends denial on the land use entitlement project. These are in Ward 1, Mr. Knutson, and our public hearings, which I now declare open. Is the applicant present?
Good morning, Sheldon Colan, 2525 West Horizon Ridge, representing the applicant. As you can see in front of you, we're taking away an existing older car wash building and proposing a new retail restaurant use on the south side of the project. Originally, we had a larger building than is being shown, and working with the Planning Commissioner, we reduced that to compensate or to reduce the lack of parking that we have. And also, a compensating benefit for the parking offset is we're providing a substantial amount of landscaping on the corner to help beautify this project. And at the same time, when we provide the new building, we're proposing to remodel the existing building to match it, which will then improve the whole corner completely at once. I did reach out to the owner, and right now, there is no specified use for the new retail building drive-through, but the one thing that has become apparent, none of the high queue coffee shops are interested in it. So it looks like it'll probably end up being a more mom-and-pop type use. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mayor Seth Floyd, for the record. Mayor, staff finds the proposed development would not be compatible with development in the surrounding area. In order to achieve the proposed design, approximately 40% of the required number of parking spaces would not be provided, and reductions in required perimeter and parking lot landscaping are needed. Staff therefore recommends denial of the variance in site development. Plan review subject to conditions if approved. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to be heard on these items? Is there anyone else wishing to be heard on these items? All right. Please come forward and state your name.
My name is Chad Francis Alonso, and just on it, like, I mean, on approval and disapproval, the only thing I have to say is how is it that the landscaping would be denied on it in any way, shape, or form? As we already have an issue of, you know, we're building astronomically fast, and it seems like we're not putting back on that part, is all I have to say on landscaping.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to be heard? Does the applicant agree to the conditions that have been set forth?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Are there any questions or comments from the council? In that case, is there a motion, Councilman Knutson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know the Planning Commissioner worked a lot with you on this project, and I appreciate you taking the time to meet with me. With that, I move to approve items 51A and B.
Shall we vote on the motion? Please post. Motion passes. Item 53, 24-0667 on the following land use entitlement project request on 8.83 acres on the west side of Rancho Drive, approximately 650 feet north of Smoke Ranch Road, R3 medium-density residential zone. 53A 24-0667-VAR1 to allow 355 parking spaces where 448 parking spaces are required. 53B 24-0667-SUP1 for proposed 38-foot-tall buildings within the 35-foot restricted area of the Airport Overlay District. 53C 24-0667-SDR1 for a major amendment to an approved site development plan review for a proposed 28-unit expansion of an approved three-story, 224-unit multifamily residential development, a 2,294-square-foot expansion of an approved one-story, 2,700-square-foot clubhouse and a parking lot reconfiguration. The applicant is Legary Development LLC and the owner is Nola Star Holdings LLC. The Planning Commission recommends approval on the land use entitlement projects, and Staff recommends denial on the land use entitlement project. These are in Ward 5. Ms. Summers Armstrong and our public hearings, which I now declare open, is the applicant present?
Yes. Good morning, Madam Mayor, City Councilmembers. Lexa Green, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. This application is a request to amend a previously approved site development plan review. The subject site is 8.83 acres, and we're located near the northwest corner of Smoke Ranch Road to the south. Somewhat to the northeast, we have Rancho Drive, along with the North Las Vegas Airport. And to the west, we have North Decatur Boulevard. The site was previously approved in August of 2018 for multifamily residential development consisting of three phases. We have Phase 1 to the north, which is completely constructed. We have Phase 2 to the south, which is currently under construction, and highlighted in yellow is Phase 3 that we're before you on today. Just in developing Phases 1 and 2, the developer has determined that there are some changes that they would like to make to Phase 3. Included in those changes are an increase in the units for Phase 3 from 224 to 252 units, which still puts us significantly below what would be permitted within the zoning of R3. We are including three-bedroom units, which weren't a part of the previous approval. We are increasing the studio unit count. There is a reduction in parking from 376 to 355, and to help address that parking reduction, we do have a cross-access agreement and parking agreement with Phase 2 to the south, which is currently slightly overparked, so that'll give us some more spaces. We are increasing the clubhouse size, just to add additional space for future residents to enjoy and also host their guests. And we are requesting a special use permit to increase the height of the building from 35 feet, which is permitted, to 38 feet. That same request was approved for Phase 2 to the south in October of 2022. In working with the councilwoman to help address concerns of maintenance and landscaping, we are in agreement with recording, excuse me, a declaration of private maintenance requirements to make sure that the landscaping on this site is maintained moving forward. Additionally, in working with the Planning Commission, we are in agreement to a condition to add 36-inch box trees along the frontage of Rancho instead of the 24-inch box trees, which were previously approved. We feel that this site will be a nice addition to the area. Phase 1 and Phase 2 have turned out great, and we're excited about building and developing this one as well. So based on that, I thank you all for your time and consideration, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Green. May I have a staff report?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Thank you. Peter Lowenstein for the record. The applicant is proposing a modification to Phase 3 of the multifamily development that have resulted in a need of a parking variance and a special use permit to allow heights to exceed the airport overlay limits that Staff is not able to support. The applicant has indicated a shared parking agreement with Phase 2 of the multifamily residential development. Phase 2 provides 536 parking spaces where 533 are required for Phase 2 only, which is in excess of three parking spaces. While additional parking spaces are available, a variance for the reduction of parking in Phase 3 is still required, which Staff does not support. Therefore, Staff is recommending denial of all applications. If approved, Staff would like to add the following condition of approval to 24-0667-SDR1. And now bear with me, it's a little lengthy, so I'll try to get through it as quickly as possible. Prior to the exercising of the site development plan review as expressed in Title 19.16.100 subsection J, the developer is required to record a declaration of private maintenance requirements, parentheses, DPMR, as a covenant on all associated properties and on behalf of all current and future property owners. The DPMR is to include a listing of all private-owned and/or maintained infrastructure improvements that come along with assignments of maintenance responsibilities for each of the subject site's landscape areas, including, but not limited to, perimeter landscape buffers, parking lot landscaping, and foundation landscaping, and is to provide a brief description of the required level of maintenance for private maintained components, including, but not limited to, building elevations, parking lot striping, trash enclosures, and driveway pans. The DPMR must be reviewed and approved by the City of Las Vegas Department of Community Development prior to the exercising of the site development review as expressed in Title 19.16.100 subsection J, and must include a statement that all properties within the subject site are subject to assessment for all associated costs should private maintenance obligations not be met and the City of Las Vegas be required to provide for said maintenance. Following recordation, the developer is to submit a copy of the recorded DPMR document to the City of Las Vegas Department of Community Development. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Lowenstein. Is there anyone else wishing to be heard on these items? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearings. Does the applicant agree to all of the conditions?
Yes, we do.
All right. Are there any questions or comments from members of the council?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chandra Summers Armstrong for the record. I am excited to see this final phase of this development completed, both started and then completed. We are desperately in need of housing in Ward 5, but I'm very thankful that you all see the vision that I have, that we provide housing that is beautiful, that the landscape is beautiful, that it is maintained in perpetuity, and that we are building a lovely community. And I'm excited to see what happens here. Thank you for adding the larger trees. I think that'll look great for Rancho. And if there's nothing else, I'd like to move for approval.
All right. Shall we vote?
With the added condition on the site development review.
I'm sorry.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Just clarifying, with the added condition on the site development plan review.
Absolutely, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Please post. Motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Have a great day.
Thank you. Agenda item 54, 25-0050-RQR1 Required Review. Applicant Outfront Media Owner, City Parkway V, Inc., for possible action on a land use entitlement project request for a required review of an approved variance that allowed a 14-foot by 48-foot off-premise sign 690 feet from another existing off-premise sign where 750 feet is the minimum separation distance required at 313 West Bonanza Road, M Industrial Zone, Ward 5. Ms. Summers Armstrong. Staff recommends approval. This is a public hearing. I now declare it open. Is the applicant present?
We are here. Good morning, Mayor. Members of the council. Ryan Arnold here, representing the applicant. Yes, we've reviewed Staff's report. We are in concurrence with their recommendations. Some brief history, this board was approved back in 1992. In 2022, we were approved to convert this to an LED. The whole structure was renovated to accommodate that, and upon visiting on Monday, it's in great condition, and so we ask for your support and approval.
Thank you very much, Mr. Arnold. Can I have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Seth Floyd for the record. Mayor, the area's character remains industrial, and the location near a freeway remains compatible with adjacent land uses. A valid building permit was issued for the sign in 2007, and all inspections have been completed. Therefore, Staff recommends approval with conditions requiring a three-year review. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Does the applicant agree to all of the conditions?
We do.
All right. Are there any questions or comments from the members of the council?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move for approval.
Shall we vote on the motion? Please post. Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Arnold. Agenda item 55, the set date on any appeals filed or required public hearings. I would instruct at this time the city clerk to set the public hearing dates and appeals from the city planning commission meetings and dangerous buildings or nuanced litter abatements.
Will do. Thank you.
Citizen participation, agenda item 56, citizens' participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. We're going to limit this to two minutes, if that's all right. This is your opportunity to address the council, but the council is not able to respond or engage in dialogue. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, City Council. My name is Paul Casey. I have been involved with downtown Las Vegas for a long time, with the Convention Authority for 24 years, and since 2009, with many events that are historic, iconic for downtown. I believe in the downtown area. I've met with many of the council in the past. It's good to see Nancy again. Mayor Pro Tem, Knutson. What I'm going to talk about is basically to say thank you to two people that have gone out of their way to spend time with me. First would be you, Mayor Berkeley. You spent some quality time with me and meeting in your office. I explain everything that I do. You are very enthusiastic about the ideas of bringing more to Las Vegas. In the past, we did 10 years from 2009 to 2019, Las Vegas Car Stars. Over 100,000 people would watch the procession as it would go from Shelby Downtown. We raised tens of millions of dollars, and in 2022, I was very lucky to receive the Presidential Lifetime Achievement Award from President Biden for my contributions to the charities and what I do for Las Vegas. I've also created the iconic Abbey Road Crossing, which is over in Fremont East, working with Mike Nolan, and that is in Councilwoman Diaz's jurisdiction. And then I believe the other would be in Councilwoman Summers Armstrong with the Fremont Street Experience. So I wanted to thank you for your time. Appreciate it. I know the council have received emails regarding that. Love to discuss it with you. I've left messages, but we'll need to set a time when they would do that. It'd be very appreciative. The other thing I'm here is to thank Mayor Pro Tem, Brian Knutson. He has gone out of his way many, many times for me, and this past December, he was gracious enough to host the recognition of the rock and roll legend, Billy Gibbons, here at Council Chambers. And because of that, Mr. Gibbons signed this LP for you. It's a limited edition. It's made out to you specifically, and there's a picture of you with him, and I just want to say thank you. There'll be more. Trust me, there'll be more, but this is for you. And the last thing before I leave, I work as a primary autism teacher because of COVID that shut me down for the last three years. I've been very graciously accepting the appointment to work with primary autism, and recently, I got to sing on behalf of the Clark County School District for the program they have. Clark County School District Got Talent. I left a brochure with you and was proud to do that, to bring attention to the children in our district. So this is for you, sir. I'll leave that up there.
That is so great.
Thank you. It's good to see you again.
Thank you.
The mayor has allowed me to speak, so I will speak. Thank you very much, Paul Casey. It's always a pleasure. Anything that I can do, I will do. And we did this when City Hall was closed, so don't tell anybody else. But I appreciate everything you've done.
I didn't tell anybody but you.
I appreciate everything you've done for our community and continue to do for children. Thank you, sir.
I look forward to really sharing more great things with downtown and make Vegas great again in a way of back to Vegas with these kind of events. Thank you so much, council.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. Appreciate you. Agenda item 57. I beg, oh, I am so sorry. Please come to the podium and introduce yourself.
My name is Clive Hayward. Good morning. I'm a magician who travels to Las Vegas to be part of its thriving magic community, to learn from my mentors, and as part of my self-education, I perform on the Fremont Street Experience following the guidelines set by City Ordinance 11.68. However, my experience has shown enforcement on Fremont Street is anything but fair or consistent. I have personally been targeted by security enforcing arbitrary, made-up rules that have no basis in the city code. For example, I was cited simply for having a small dolly despite the fact that it was folded up and stored in my case. There's nothing in the ordinance that prohibits this, yet it was still issued a criminal citation. This pattern goes beyond just security. The city marshals, instead of ensuring fair enforcement of the law, frequently issue citations without checking or validating whether a violation of 11.68 has occurred. Rather than upholding the ordinance as written, they act on security's arbitrary decisions leading to wrongful citations and unnecessary legal burdens on performers. In some cases, I've been threatened with unlawful arrest. Now, I am facing the burden of returning to Las Vegas at great personal expense to defend myself against a charge that never should have been issued. My case is still forthcoming, but the very fact that I must fight this demonstrates a serious problem with how these laws are being enforced. This is not just me. It's about every performer who comes to Las Vegas to share their art, only to be subject to intimidation and arbitrary enforcement. I urge the council to review these practices, ensure that the street performers who follow the law are treated fairly, and that our due process is respected. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for sharing with us your situation. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Please state your name.
I'm Chad Francis Alonso. Thank you, Mayor, Councilwoman, Councilmen, city planners. I just want to introduce myself, as I look forward to working with you all. This is my first meeting in Vegas, and I've had one in Georgia and one in Kansas, and I understand, I'm just learning how it works. So a couple of topics I just want to, you know, that I'd touch on. I'd touch on is definitely the agriculture and putting back what we've been taking out as we do build. It's understandable, you know, we got to build for people to live. I'd also like to—another big one is just touching up on the homelessness and cleaning up the streets, and I look forward to working with you all on that one. That's another big one on my heart, because, you know, as I was looking at, you know, the topics at hand, you know, I see, you know, Vegas is growing always, and as, you know, as new comes in, I feel like the old should be kind of just dispersed around properly, you know, if the funds are there to purchase like some vehicles for rehabs, churches, and stuff like that, you know. And yeah, I just wanted to introduce myself and look forward to working with you all.
Well, thank you so much. Is there anybody else that wishes to address the Please state your name.
Hello, Madam Mayor and City Council. My name is Kelvin Gordon. I'm a performer on Fremont Street. My only issue—I can only speak for myself—is that, first of all, I do respect the integrity of maintaining a professional environment. Sometimes they have a three-day event like St. Patrick's Day, and we're kicked out for the whole three days, and I was wondering if we could just limit it down possibly to one day. I'm not an attorney. I don't know all the particulars of how they come to their decisions, but it's how it's done. And they have an area called the Free Zone, which we're not permitted to perform in even during a three-day festival, if that could possibly have some leniency for us to be able to perform there. Again, I can just only speak for myself, and that's it.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much. Is there anybody else that wishes to address the council? Please come forward and state your name.
Good day, Mayor, City Council members. My name is Clyde Williams.
Would you go by the—yeah, this way we could hear you.
My name is Clyde Williams. I've been a street performer on Fremont Street for the last nine years. Recently, the Fremont Street LLC have been displaying from very abnormal behavior. Last weekend, for example, they closed all of the circles. Now, 1168 108B2 says that no fewer than 25 circles will be available. The only time they can close the whole street is when the street is closed from the public. They have a permit. They go by the start-up—the setup date and the tear-down date of the permit and disregarded the time stipulated in the permit from 12 noon to 11:00 PM. They took away our ability to participate in expressive ability for 72 hours. Everyone's. And they did this twice. They did it for the Neon Festival, and they have intention of doing it again in the near future. This is not how the ordinance was designed. At least, this is not the ordinance that says in the website. Please take a look at this. We need your help. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Is there anybody else that wishes to address the city council? In that case, I thank everyone that has spoken, and we will now move to item 57. Council emerging issues. Discussion regarding potential items for future city council agendas or awards. Any discussion must be limited to whether or not such proposed items shall be placed on a future agenda, and no discussion regarding the substance of any such proposed topic shall occur. No action shall be taken. Do any members of the council have any topics that they would like to bring forward under this item? In that case, I thank you, and we move to item 58. Council member recognition. Comments made by individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. Ms. Summers Armstrong, let me make it easy for you. Do you have anything you wish to say?
Okay, so just bear with the froggy voice. We had a wonderful beginning of March. We participated in the Nevada Reading Week and went out throughout the community reading to children. We had a blast at Vegas Vista Academy, J.T. McWilliams Elementary, Wendell P. Williams Elementary, Doris Reed Elementary, Ali Detweiler, Rainbow Dreams Academy, Matt Kelly, and Kermit Booker Elementary School. The kids had a blast. We had a blast reading to them. It is just so fun to read books, and we are encourage parents to please continue to read to your children as often as possible. It opens up their little minds and helps them to dream big. We have an upcoming event next Saturday—that this Saturday, the 22nd of March, there will be a spring cleaning. We will be partnering with the Southern Nevada Regional Housing Authority to beautify in historic West Las Vegas. We'll be picking up trash in the neighborhood. If anyone would like to volunteer, please sign up or call 702-229-2179. This is going to be a wonderful event, and it's very neighborly, and we encourage you to come out and support your neighbors. Finally, we will have the Las Vegas Pineapple Fest III Music Festival at Sammy Davis Jr.'s Plaza at Lorenz Park. This will be live music and entertainment, music for all ages. It's going to be a vibrant festival of art, music, and artists showcase their talents, so please participate. Tickets are $20, because there are professional musicians will be there. For more information, please go to www.secosband.com. We hope to see you there. And finally, if you want more information about activities in Ward 5 or in the city as a general for classes and activities, just go to the website at You see a picture of my staff. We are so excited to be serving the community, and we would love to hear from you if you have questions or concerns. Our number is 702-229-5443. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Polansky.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On Friday, March 7th, I wrapped up Nevada Reading Week with a visit to Cimarron Rose Community Center for our annual Juice with Seuss event. The center was packed with kids and families as the Cat in the Hat read stories to the attendees. Hats off to Kristin Carducci and her staff for another fantastic event, and to Kristy Garnas and her events team for setting up the juice boxes and the yummy treats. I had a great time with an amazing group of lady friends and colleagues as we came together to celebrate International Women's Day on Saturday, March 8th. I'm so honored to serve the city of Las Vegas with five other intelligent, inspiring women. We all have unique traits and strengths and have an incredible opportunity to impact and give back to our community every day. Next up, this past Saturday, I hosted another successful shredding and medication disposal event for my Sun City Summerlin residents. My staff, city events team, and folks from Shred It clocked a record of processing over 300 cars in the first hour alone. Thanks to all who participated, and I look forward to continuing to bring this highly utilized service to my constituents in Sun City. Tomorrow is the deadline to submit nominations for outstanding Ward Ford teacher. We will be selecting one elementary school teacher, one middle school teacher, and one high school teacher for this award. Let's let our amazing teachers know how grateful we all are for their hard work. Next up, please join me on Saturday, March 28th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Wayne Bunker Park for our first-time event, the Children's Fair. The event will feature kids promoting their businesses, a talent showcase, a business licensing workshop, and food trucks for purchase. Next up on Tuesday, April 1st, Las Vegas MPD Summerlin Area Command is having their first Tuesday at 5:30 at the Starbright Theater located at 2215 Thomas Ryan Drive. Join Captain Fennis, myself, Deanna O'Rear Cameron, and Judge Bill Voight as we discuss important topics such as elder abuse, neglect, and fraud. Parents, are you looking for a safe and fun option for your kids when school is out? Check out the No School Fun Days in April offered at multiple locations by the City of Las Vegas Parks and Rec Department. And do you have any information regarding any of the 16 missing children featured on this slide? If so, please call LV MPD Missing Person Detail at Let's get them back home with their families. Runaway kids, there is always a free bus ride home. And lastly, please stay connected with us on social media platforms or contact us directly the old-fashioned way at 702-229-2524. We're always here to provide any assistance that we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And I have to say, I was in Sun City a few nights ago, and they were still talking about your shredding event. It was wildly successful, so congratulations to you. And Mayor Protem Knutson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At our last meeting, Councilwoman Diaz made Alex feel guilty, and so I will suffer the consequences. It's Certified Nurses Day. March 19th is celebrated every year as Certified Nurses Day. It's a day of recognition for and by healthcare leaders dedicated to nursing professionalism, excellence, recognition, and service. March 19th is the birthday of Dr. Margarita Greta Madden-Stiles, one of the greatest leaders in the field of nursing certification. It's also International Read to Me Day. March 19th is also celebrating International Read to Me Day. It's an international campaign to advocate for children's literacy and build a community to support, to empower children with the gift of reading. It fits in perfectly with all of our experiences reading over the last couple of weeks. It was super fun at all of our schools. I had to read to a whole grade. I don't know if anybody got that, but an entire grade.
Yeah, me too, for three classes.
And we have Brews with Brian coming up. It's on Tuesday, March 25th, at 5:30 at the Bagel Cafe. Our topical area is homelessness. We're going to be talking with our Moore team and our DPS team, but we're going to be super crowded. There's a lot going on in that field, so if you don't like crowds, this is not the one for you. Call me, and we'll get together individually, because there's going to be a lot of people here. There's a lot to talk about. And there's Art in the Park coming up. It's on May 10th from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM at Rainbow Family Park. If you want to be an artist or a vendor, please scan that code there and join us. And we are in the midst of Corporate Challenge, so we're wishing Dave and Alex well wishes as they compete for Corporate Challenge. And that's all I got, Mayor. Thank you, Councilwoman Diaz.
And thank you very much, Mayor Protem. Councilwoman Diaz?
I appreciate knowing what we celebrate or commemorate, and I'm a woman of tradition, MPT, so thank you for keeping the tradition alive here. March comes in roaring like a lion, and it has been nonstop, I think, for all of us on this council, so I'm just going to share some things we've been up to on last Saturday. Well, not last Saturday, but Saturday before last. It was International Women's Day on March 8th, and it was amazing to celebrate our sisterhood there at East Las Vegas Community Center. Thank you to La Campesina 96.7 for their support. Assemblywoman Selena Torres also stopped by the event, and a huge thank you to all sponsors and organizations who made this event possible and who attended, and your presence made the day's activities and festivities truly special. That same morning, right before I hit that event, I went to the ribbon cutting of Republic Goods, and we have a new female entrepreneur, Noel Hurst, who opened a second-hand goods store, and I invite everyone to go. It's kind of like a co-op. She's renting closets to over 70 different individuals who curate those closets, and there's no need to buy new. You can just go find some really good gems in Republic Goods off of Main Street, so please find them in our fabulous arts district. On March 12th, we had a wonderful potluck with McKnight seniors, and I always love to get my time in with my seniors, and we've been able to stop by when many of them are having birthdays, and they love to play bingo and win raffle prizes, so always love to give to them. That same day, Wednesday, March 12th, in the evening, we had a Stewart Avenue Complete Streets public meeting. We're about 30% design of the improvements that are going to stretch both Councilwoman Summers Armstrong's Ward from Sixth Street, and then once we hit Bruce on the other side, it's Ward 3, and it goes all the way to Nellis. So we're going to basically be reinventing and reimagining the avenue, and I want to give a shout-out to all of our city staff for the amazing presentation and taking the input from the residents, but I also want to put in a plug for Parametrics. Parametrics is a technology company that was able to provide what the renderings currently look like, the improvements we're looking to do on Stewart. So you could see it 3D, Google Maps, with what it's going to potentially look like, and then you could also put on VR goggles and kind of play around with stretches of the streets or things you're interested in seeing through the lens of improvement. So I just want to thank everyone who had a hand in that. It was absolutely mind-blowing and amazing. March 12th is a really busy day. On that day earlier, we were able to attend the official historic designation of the home located on 1433 Cottonwood Place as a hunt ridge home. The house, one of only three determined individually eligible for historic listing, was constructed in 1944. And Mr. Stodall, Dr. Sebrant, the owner, wealthy Silva, and I took part in the dedication of this home to our Las Vegas Historic Property Register, because it retains its integrity of location, setting, feeling, and association, and it is located at its original address, and due to the retention of the original modest size, evokes everything that a historic home of this—of these many years that was built during World War II should. So congratulations to Ms. Silva on being added to the historic register. Tuesday, March 11th, we had an awesome community workshop at East Las Vegas Community Center. You can see all the folks to the left who partook, and they found that it was very helpful to de-stress and let your creative juices flow and listen to an artist. Adri Del Rosio was in town, the artist that's responsible for the beautiful mural on East Las Vegas Community Center. Our collective strength has no boundaries, and so we wanted to take advantage that she was back in Las Vegas to do a community workshop, and everybody loved it. We also partnered up with UNLV and that—UNLV's Baric Museum of Art. She was able to basically talk to us about what it means She was able to basically talk to us about what it means to be a woman muralist from Mexico and all of her creations and struggles and challenges and how she's been able to grow as an artist. So I just wanted to thank everyone. UNLV, our fabulous East Las Vegas Community Center staff, PLT, the consulate of Mexico, and all of the attendees for making these two events absolutely amazing and inspirational. On March 13th, we were able to partake in a John S. Park walking tour. I want to thank Alan Rogers, board member of the Nevada Preservation Foundation and proud resident of the historic John S. Park neighborhood for graciously giving the city Las Vegas team an excellent tour of John S. Park's history on the wettest day of Las Vegas. We learned interesting facts about the homes and past residents of the oldest homes in John S. Park that date back to 1931. Eric Kroll, board member of the John S. Park Neighborhood Association, also joined the tour and shared the unique design components of the newly installed John S. Park signs that you can see here on the right-hand picture that the Neighborhood Association designed collectively, and we, the city, helped them place them. We still have to relocate some signs, but we're working on that. But that was all accomplished through our Neighborhood Partners Fund. So if you're a neighborhood association, please look out for that opportunities if you want to do something collectively. The Neighborhood Partners Fund is an awesome way to get the funds, and you just need to match it with your work. On Saturday, March 15th, we hosted a wonderful cleanup and block party at Gary Rees Freedom Park. Thank you to all the volunteers that helped us collect 194 pounds of trash. Even though we keep our grounds pretty tidy, there's always so much more to collect. And to the community partners that taught us how to better be stewards of our environment, the Wilderness Society, Indigenous Voices of Nevada, the Solidarity Fringe, Nevada Plants, Somos Volantes, Mojave Maxx, and Clark County Parks and Rec all helped us out with this amazing feat. Just for these events coming up, you and the family are invited to the Third Annual Free Art and Resource Fair Supporting Mental Health and Self-Care Through the Arts and Live Music. Stop by the Historic Fifth Street School this Saturday between 10 a.m. and 2 p.m. for this very special event co-sponsored by the First Friday Foundation and a grant from the National Endowment for the Arts. It's "Are You OK?" It's its third time. I hope that you guys will all attend. On Saturday, March 22nd, meet and mingle with neighborhood associations from Ward Three. We're going to have this awesome event to share and learn about things that you could be doing with your neighborhood associations and your neighbors. Enjoy a light brunch, relax over a selection of light bites, and access resources. Learn about the support and resources that our Department of Neighborhood Services offer. So take note, and we hope you can stop by. Donuts and pup cups, Tuesday, March 25th, 5:00 to 6:30, Gary Rees Freedom Park, 8:50 North Mojave Road. I hope that you all can come by and support. You're invited to a free donut, and your pup will receive a free pup cup. And this is all thanks to our Department of Public Safety, who we honored earlier. They're going to help us with this event to support the Latino Peace Officers Association. The Animal Foundation will also be making free dog collar tags for our fur babies. So please spread the word. And last but not least, a small reminder from our friends at LVMPD about the difference in calling 911 or when to best call 311. And I know that long wait times sometimes make us call or dial 911, but we're actually delaying assistance to real urgent matters. So if yours doesn't fall in the 911 category, 311 has improved significantly, I can attest. I've called into it late last year and had to wait only a couple of minutes versus the lengthy time that a lot of residents had communicated in the past. So that's it for me, Mayor. I hope everyone has an awesome spring break with their kiddos if they're off of school this week.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Diaz. Councilwoman Seaman?
Thank you. It was great celebrating Nevada Reading Week with the outstanding students at Strong Start Elementary School. Interacting with our next generation of leaders gives me great joy. I was honored to be recognized as one of the honorees of the Outstanding Women of the Year Award Ceremony, standing alongside an incredible group of women whose achievements continue to uplift and empower our community. I also want to congratulate Jerry Schroeder for being one of the awardees. I visited Kitty McDonough Ward Elementary School to present Cub Scout 500 with a certificate of recognition for their outstanding leadership, service, and commitment to insights into local politics, the voting process, and the role of a council member so they could earn a merit badge. These kids inspired me with great questions about local government. I was also excited to be invited as a speaker at the Nevada Hispanic Group. I also presented them with the certificate of recognition celebrating their dedication to supporting Hispanic and non-Hispanic businesses, driving economic growth and fostering strong community connections. It was an inspiring afternoon surrounded by passionate leaders and change-makers. Next slide. So our next breakfast buzz and Ward Two buzz will be Saturday, March 22nd, from 9:00 to 10:00 at Veterans Memorial Center. And please RSVP. We want to make sure we have enough breakfast for everyone. We welcome you. We have Metro, our marshals. This coming one, we have also Red Rock Search and Rescue, who are going to answer any questions that you might have, so please join us. And then we're still calling all artists. It's not too late to join our April 5th, 10:00 to 4:00 Art in the Park. If you would like to reserve a booth, please register with a QR code or call our office or email us. And then if you would like to attend Art in the Park, we always have a great venue with food trucks and jazz. We have been doing this now for the past five years, and it's always a hit to come out and see all your local artists. We have our Adopt a Pet. We're highlighting Bluey, who's a Husky Pomeranian. He's about 35 pounds a year and six months at the Nevada SPCA. We also have Gracie, a domestic short-haired female, about 11 pounds, 12 years old. These animals and so many more are waiting for forever homes. You can contact the Nevada SPCA, you can contact the animal shelter, you can contact all our pet rescues, but we would love to find homes for these animals. Next slide. If you would like to get the word out about your Ward Two business and be a part of our Small Business Saturdays, which we feature on my social media every Saturday, you can call us at 702-229-2420 or email us at wardtwo@lasvegasnevada.gov. If you have any issues in Ward Two, we would be happy to address those. Same number, 702-229-2420, wardtwo@lasvegasnevada.gov. If you're not sure what area you're in, you can also call my office, and we'll lead you in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Bruni?
Last but not least, good morning, everyone. I wanted to start today by highlighting some of our recent events. We were thrilled to participate in Nevada Reading Week last week. I attended Clyde Cox Elementary School and enjoyed hanging out in Mrs. Parker's kindergarten classroom. This was an extra special time for me because Ms. Parker is a resident of Ward Six, who actually used to babysit my kids and read to them. So it was a wonderful circle of life moment to see Ms. Parker and read to her classroom kids. Last week, I was thrilled to celebrate St. Patrick's Day with the seniors in Ward Six who attended the luncheon hosted by the Centennial Hills Active Adult Center. A call out to Jen Blanchard, who always plans the menus, cooks all of the food, and decorates so beautifully. Thank you to Maggie Plaschur for joining the festive celebration. As the vice chair of the Southern Nevada Housing Authority, I was thrilled to be joined by my colleagues, Mayor Berkeley and Councilman Chandra Summers Armstrong, to break ground on 201 affordable housing units in Ward Five. Thank you to the Michaels Company for your interest in building a beautiful community complete with amazing amenities like a dog park and barbecue stations that will serve the residents and their families. Looking ahead, we have some great events you won't want to miss. First, join us next Wednesday from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at our Centennial Hills Active Adult Center, where our Community Connections Meeting will be focused on the topic of HOAs. We've been getting a lot of questions about HOAs, so we're thrilled to be bringing to our residents a panel of experts, including the Nevada Ambudsman for HOAs, as well as representatives from our city's Code Enforcement Department and legal team. Bring your questions and come meet your neighbors. Next month's Boca Ditos with Bruni will be held on Thursday, April 10th, from 9:00 to 11:00 at our Centennial Hills Y Satellite Office. Then we'll be hopping into spring with our annual Spring Fling Pet Parade and Classic Car Show on Saturday, April 19th, from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. at Floyd Lamb Park. The planned activities will provide something for everyone. Please contact our office if you want to be a community or art vendor or show your classic car. We have a lot of classic car aficionados in Ward Six. Finally, mark your calendars for our next Small Business Breakfast on Wednesday, April 23rd, from 8:30 a.m. to 10 a.m. at the Centennial Hills Active Adult Center. We've got a great and growing list of speakers who will be there to provide information about products and programs that can help our small businesses grow. Please RSVP so we can make sure we have enough breakfast for everyone. As always, we want to hear from you. Please contact our office at wardsix@lasvegasnevada.gov or call us at 702-229-5463. Thank you, and enjoy your spring break.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bruni. As usual, when I hear all the activity in all the wards, you all make me very proud to be a member of the city council, so thank you so much. I was hoping before we adjourned to be able to make an announcement to the public regarding the Badlands Resolution. Unfortunately, it's a little premature, so I invite everybody to check the city's social media, where we will make an announcement as soon as the resolution is concluded, which should be momentarily. And having said that, I wish everybody a very happy holiday with spring break, and this meeting is adjourned.